Good morning and welcome to school committee meeting today, Monday, August the 10th. The meeting is being recorded for LCTV, aired live, and being streamed on LongMeadow.org. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I got it. It's working.
The Longmeadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe, caring learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and to become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Longmeadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the students, the schools, and the Longmeadow community. As, as, for the record, we do have one member who is participating remotely. Michelle, hello?
Hi Janet.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good thanks. So now that we've got our phone troubles fixed, we do have all members here. And for any voting, again, as a reminder, it'll all be by roll call vote. So, we'll begin, well, I don't know where Tom went.
Tom went to probably go talk to Nick about the fact that the phone was...
Try to fix the phone. Alright, so while we're waiting on Tom to do the revised FY16 budget, I'll let Marie go ahead and start with enrollment data and updates.
Thank you. I apologize for giving you the maps this morning, but Marie was on vacation and I just was able to mute her this morning. You have, in front of you, last week I sent you an update on class size. And we updated them again as of this morning. So the first chart that you have says elementary enrollment fall 2015. The kindergarten enrollment is center is at 15 for the full day, 12 for the half day, class size. Wolf Swamp 15 for the full day, Blueberry Hill 17 for the full day. Those, that, those classes reflect the two new teachers that were added last week. The teachers were told, the principals were told that they could hire another kindergarten teacher at Wolf Swamp and Center. We also added a second grade teacher at Blueberry, that's reflected in these numbers. First grade is centers at 17, Wolf Swamp 17, Blueberry Hill 20. Second grade, center 19, Wolf Swamp 17, Blueberry Hill 18, reflecting the additional teacher. Grade three, center 18, Wolf Swamp 20, Blueberry Hill 22. Grade four, center 19, Wolf Swamp 20, Blueberry Hill 18. Grade five, center 21, Wolf Swamp 22, and Blueberry Hill 20. The second document that you have is a one-page that shows you the new enrollment. We have had a surge in enrollment again this summer that was not reflected in projections. We have a lot of people moving into town. We have a total of 111 new students that have registered this summer for classes. So I broke that down for you by grade and by school so that you could see where the enrollment is. It's, it's spread out throughout the district, but that has impacted class sizes at the elementary level, you can say.
Can I ask a question about this first chart?
Sure.
I thought we were trying to reduce the population of Blueberry Hill.
We are.
Well, for, uh, grade three, Blueberry Hill is 22 average, right?
Right.
Uh, and then for grade one, it's 20, the others are 17. For kindergarten, it's 17, the others are 12 and 15. I mean, what, after all the agony we went through, couldn't we lower it even more?
Well, that's why I'm showing you the new enrollment, the, to show you how the summer numbers have impacted class sizes.
Well, are we, are we moving people then where, where there's smaller population? Or are we just letting geography determine it?
It's always geography. They move into a neighborhood and that's the school again.
It's not always geography, because we draw the lines for geography, right?
Are you suggesting if someone moves into Blueberry, they could go to another school?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've never done that.
If it's overcrowded.
Yeah, we've never done that.
Well, maybe we should start doing it. That's how this thing started to get out of control, frankly.
Yeah, these numbers are all good, John. These are the numbers that we've always been within. You know, for the younger grades, we look up to numbers of 23 and then we start making adjustments, which we've been making all along. I think these numbers are solid and they, they give class sizes where good education can happen.
And I think one thing that, you know, we can't control is home sales and those who move in and how many children they're moving in and to what neighborhood they're moving in. You know, the fact that there are 22 students who moved in as of Friday to Blueberry at different grade levels, I mean, that's, those are the unpredictables. You know, so long as the class sizes are comparable, which, you know, they are plus or minus two or three, it's, it's not that one grade is, is particularly, you know, higher than the other. We've tried to, and by adding another second grade teacher to keep the class sizes equitable. I would hate to see if we didn't move 70 students in an entire neighborhood, what those numbers would be and how overcrowded Blueberry would be. But I think, you know, that's one thing that's not in our control is where people buy homes and how many children they have.
But we're still, we're still fine if you, Marie drew up maps for you and again, she just got back from vacation, so I appreciate her doing this. But the, the one grade level of Blueberry that still is on the watch list is the first grade. That's a number that if that went up any higher, we'd look to put in another section. The others all look stable and look like they'd be within what we want. But what Marie did is gave you a map, the top map is adding the grade two section, which we've already done. So that, that's a given. That shows you where everyone would go. It shows you last year's map, and then the last one shows you if we had to add back a first grade too, how she'd fit that in. So there's, there's still space at Blueberry. We still, we still have it managed and, and space allocations will be fine.
And Michelle, I apologize. Marie just got these to us this morning, so I will make sure that you get copies of all of that.
I sent them to her.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think I saw an email.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
I have them, but if I could just interject for a second. The first question I have is, are we looking at the third grade at Blueberry? Was 20 students in class at all? We lucked out and that grade didn't seem to have gotten many new students, but, you know, is that at all on your watch list?
It, it hasn't been. If it goes up substantially, when we get to the third grade and fourth grade and fifth grade, we don't worry as, keeping the numbers as low as we do in the K-1, 2. Those typically have always been our target areas, but if that were to surge, we'd certainly watch that one too.
Because the fifth grade at Wolf Swamp is in a similar situation.
Yeah.
What?
And I, my second question is, how does, how, do we have any records or easy to pull up data on how many new students we get typically per year? Would this be out of the norm?
Throughout the school year.
We can go back and look at that. I, I don't have that data offhand. What we do is, what we did do is we looked at projections that we had to see what, what projections were coming in, and that's how we based our numbers on those projections. But I think that we're seeing a surge in population that's much greater than we have in the past.
Well, I guess, I would, I would just like to stress that I think we need to do a better job of projecting ahead of time the new enrollment, because, you know, I, when we were talking about class sizes in state cap in April, I anticipated that we'd end up adding these sections. And I think the downside to what we're doing now is we let go of some seasoned teachers and that already knew Blueberry, they already knew the staff and everything, and now we're looking for new hires at the end of the summer. And I just feel like if we had anticipated this better then, we wouldn't be in the situation we're in right now.
Michelle, can I just ask you a question? And, and I don't mean this to be snide or snotty at all. How do you, how would you suggest anticipating families moving in? For those who enroll but...
Looking at the history, looking at the history. So I'm, you know, if we, back in April, we had some classes that were on the bubble. And I think we talked about then that we always get new students coming in in the summer. So if we had some classes that were just on the cusp of if we got one or two students needing a new section, then we probably should have talked about that then. If we know that our history is that we get on average for the last, you know, if we look at the new students coming in for five years back, and we tend to get somewhere in the vicinity of 75 new students or something per year. And I think we have to assume we'll be getting, those classes that were on the bubble, we'll be getting them.
Yeah, I have looked at it in the past and there was no rhyme or reason to the, no pattern that you could say, oh, we will always have an extra second grade or we'll always have, have an extra kindergarten. Though, they do vary, but we could pull up that data again and see if there are any trends. But I have not noticed any trends when I looked last year.
Okay.
Liz?
So during this whole process, before I was on the school committee, I think the, when I was, I was attending the meetings, the redistricting committee meetings, and I, actually to go back to something Mr. Fitzgerald just said, I think it would have been important or should have been important to really look at some long-term options. Now, I know that Plan E idea that was presented to the public didn't work, but there are a lot of different ways that you could look at something where instead of making a major shift once every few years, now, I know it took about 10 years last time, but realistically, when you look at the numbers, it should probably happen every three to five years. So instead of looking at that, because right now, we just ran into the same situation. I mean, we only saved two spaces based on redistricting, right? Two classrooms? Is that correct?
No.
We saved four.
Four to, actually six if you're looking at special ed too, because they've been spread out. Special ed, math, coach, literacy specialists.
We saved six spaces?
I think it was four to six spaces.
I thought it was four.
I wasn't gonna go six, but...
About four.
Two to four is what I heard.
Okay, so my understanding was two at the time, but anyway. So the bottom line is we save spaces, but based on this, you know, we at least need to have one classroom teacher and possibly a second one in first grade. So the spaces that we were trying to save, and we said there was no other way to do it except for redistricting, but now we have a map that shows there is another way to save some space. And I'm gonna ask how we did that exactly, but, but at the time, I know the discussion with parents was there was no way to save space but to redistrict. But then we have a map that shows we could do it some other way, because we just did. I think realistically, maybe more kids should have been moved, because we are still running into the same problem at Blueberry, it looks like. There's still too many kids for that building. So I don't, I don't know that what we just did really is a long-term fix in any way, and in fact, it almost looks like it didn't even fix this year. Because we're back to, again, higher numbers at Blueberry and we're filling up the spaces we just gained. And to add a first grade teacher now, I mean, we're August 10th. So if we decide, you know, another family moves in or something, or a couple of families, you know, we're gonna scramble to get the space and then also to hire somebody.
Well, the decision's pretty much made not to hire another one. Again, unless it was an unusual surge in number, because we said the first week in August is when we'd make those decisions and the decisions were made.
Okay. And that's true also with third grade that unless something unusual happens, we're gonna leave it alone.
Yep.
What would, what would be unusual for third grade? Like, what is the point at which we would consider adding a section?
We, we look when we get to all classes at 23.
Okay.
So how did we come up with more space? Because I just got this map, so I'm not sure exactly what I'm looking at here as far as...
We, we took the resource room, there were, there were four people in the resource rooms. So if you're taking a look at, at reading, there were three people in those rooms. If you take a look, ELL is now its own classroom, speech has been given its own classroom, they shared before. The resource room has now taken two rooms instead of one room.
Okay.
So that, they've all been spread out. So you can see that we now have a book closet back, but that could be a literacy coach's office if we needed to take another classroom there. So those people are spread out, so there is a lot more space for the support services that have been added over the past several years.
But where are we putting the new second grade class? What is that taking the place of?
Is that that two in the red?
Mm-hmm. It looks like it's replacing a third grade class that used to be, because last year they had five third grade classes?
Any of third pages the best indication would be, and that includes the first grade as well.
Well, no. If you compare it to last year, that's what Russ is asking, is what, where are we adding a second grade classroom?
This is last year?
The middle one is last year's.
So I guess my question is, what was going to be in that space before we put the new second grade class?
Probably just keeping it for state.
She probably had another resource room teacher in there. Separated, the reading, the reading person would get their own room instead of sharing.
Instead of being the two together.
I have a question. So, the students that were transferred, you said there were 70?
About 70.
About 70?
About 70.
64.
Yes. About 70 students.
Okay. And then, new enrollment is only 22 for Blueberry. So still 50 less students.
And the fifth grade will go down. We did redistrict and we did keep the fifth grade in. So next year, the fifth grade will reduce, opening up another, another section.
And then, to your point, Liz, that's true. I don't, I know we haven't pulled the data to see how many new enrollees for center from that particular neighborhood, both kindergarten and grade levels. Also, so if we had kept those 64, plus any of those new enrollees.
You had a proportion of the 17 new ones, so.
Right. You know, I, I don't know how that would play out either. So I mean, I don't...
Well, and I think especially if you go back, and I, I don't know the answer itself off the top of my head, but if we go back and look at what the enrollment in first and second was going to be after we voted to redistrict, before we got an influx of 14 kids, you know, I think that's, you know, that's probably gonna show you that we weren't that far off.
Right. So here's, I'm just looking at where we were before and where we are adding back a second and a first grade, because that's the one I'm looking at, because I assume that's what we're doing. I feel like without a big surge, we're okay this year. But I feel like next year, if enrollment continues the way it has been, we're gonna have to think about it again. And so I don't know where that leaves the district. Right now, it feels like we're at capacity, at, at an ideal capacity. Like, I don't wanna have to move resource rooms back together and put people in too tight of quarters, again, to accommodate an extra classroom.
Because it looks like first and third, next year, both could need another teacher, so second and fourth next year.
So we'd have to look at, we'll have to take a close look at that. I guess the district will be watching that?
But when we redistricted, we, we, well, when the school did, we moved really just two classroom teachers over to center. But now we're adding one back. So obviously, from a budget perspective, and, and we had a potential of moving both of them back, right? So from a budget perspective, we moved kids, but we ended up with more cost in order to do it. And the, and the class sizes don't really look that much different than they did before we did all of this. The only thing it looks like we did was we saved some space.
That's what we needed to do.
But it came at a cost, obviously, which makes some sense. It just looks like we didn't actually solve the problem. The problem still exists at Blueberry.
But I think to Liz's point, the problem would have been augmented by 64 more students at Blueberry. So we did solve a problem. With these students moving in since, you know, from June through August 7th, we'd still have to add teachers, whether it, it's at Blueberry or center or at whatever school.
We'd be looking at a school population that had 42 more children in that.
Right.
That's, that's the, that's, I guess that's the point.
Which is two more classrooms at, at Blueberry.
But we're at, we were just about to do that anyway. I mean, the reality is, the only difference I see is the space. I think the class sizes, even if those kids stayed, if we had the two other teachers, which we're having one of the two now, I don't think the class sizes would have been hugely different, because they spread out over all five grades. But we would have not had the space, you know, to do it, I think.
Well, I think, you know, and, and from what I remember back from the numbers is there would have had to be another section for third grade. And there would have most likely had to be another section for fourth grade. So, you know, with the classrooms, does it, and then if you add those students in, now their class size numbers would be lower than the other schools.
Yeah, I've never disagreed with the concept of moving kids. My concern the whole time through this process was we picked a method that even just sitting in the audience, I could see wasn't gonna work in a year or two. It was gonna be a problem again. Because the class sizes were too close at Blueberry to numbers that we don't want. And really, to go back to what you said before, I mean, if, either I think we needed to move more kids or we needed to come up with a way where the administration could look at it every year. But this is, I'm just afraid that, you know, so I have a three-year term. It looks like I'm gonna be looking at this within that three-year term, because it's...
It feels like we should be including Wolf Swamp instead of just going back and forth between Blueberry and Center. That's, because I'm looking at these numbers, and Blueberry Hill has 428, Wolf Swamp has 340, and Center has 391.
But that doesn't equate preschool. You need to have the preschool into Wolf Swamp.
Oh, okay. So Wolf Swamp has 50 preschools.
50 more.
Preschool.
And I think, you know, from redistricting and that committee with, with busing and, and other requirements, there really aren't many areas in the town that can be added into Wolf Swamp without additional busing or transportation issues. Because I, I know...
Because he's got another, an extra classroom right now, right? Still?
I don't know.
To the best of my, when, when I took it the tour last spring, I remember him saying what he would do and saying he still has an extra classroom.
He just used it now with his, with the additional kindergarten teacher.
So I mean, I think it's something that, you know, the district always watches. I think, you know, this is something that happens every summer. You know, we do use the Nezdek predictions for enrollment growth and they've been showing, you know, that growth is either stagnant or declining. So this is, again, the second year that numbers are not falling in line with Nezdek. But I mean, there are only so many tools that we have and that we can use to predict the future and, and that's just what it is, is predicting. I mean, we could have gone through the summer and had, you know, five students enroll at Blueberry. It depends on home sales, it depends on the market and buying. Those are all things that are out of our control. You know, the fact that, of looking either at the map of adding the second grade section or adding the second grade and a first grade, we still are not in the situation that we were in last year with having four people sharing a room. You know...
Is it safe to say that the district can continue to keep an eye on it and think about...
I think definitely we have to. I mean, you know...
I can give you monthly enrollment updates.
And one thing that's interesting is, you know, based on the data that we have per census and per, you know, preschool enrolled children for our kindergarten, there were about 100 students, according to the data we have. Right now, we have 152 enrolled. So that's a 33% difference that, you know, we're off by. Now, whether that's because people don't fill out their census data, whether it's because people have moved here, you know, there's a lot up in the air. You know, people go to, to private, but in terms of the data that we have available that we can use, you know, it, it's really hard to work with numbers when they're 33% off. So I think definitely it's something that we continue to watch, continue to look at, you know, moving forward.
I guess my, my concern though through that process is we... Said we had to move those two classrooms out, and basically what we're saying now is we could actually move them back in and still have the space that we need.
But we moved four classrooms of students and she filled two.
You couldn't. You'd be out of compliance with DESE for special educators, because if you moved them back in, you'd have four special educators in a row.
But we only moved two classroom teachers.
We moved four classrooms.
We moved first and second. Who else was moved?
Enough students in other sections were moved to decrease them from four to three.
I don't recall that in the process, but maybe I missed something.
So we've gotten rid of a couple of our, our, the resource room. So there's only two, gonna be two people upstairs in the resource room.
Mm-hmm. Instead of four.
Instead of four.
And instead of three...
And we've gotten rid of that first and second grade on that music, over by the art and music hall. So she's giving that to the speech and math, which is similar to how it's set up over at Wolf Swamp, which is what it was built for, from what I understand from my tours. Um, and then, um, we've got two people in the reading room now instead of three. I thought there were...
ELL has their own space, math has their own space.
ELL and reading, yeah. So on that first wall that faces out, we reduced some people in those as well. Does that sound right?
And then you've also...
By transferring them to Center School?
Yep. Right. And then you've also freed up, instead of using the nurses' room for testing and learning space, it's now just brought back down to testing.
The nurse is testing.
Right. And then that little cubby on the corner is also just testing versus...
Testing. Correct.
A learning space, because we had specific kids in those rooms before.
Right. And that one corner room that was used for learning space is now just being re-appropriated for testing space. And the literacy coach does get her own office rather than being in the book closet with the books. So, I mean, there's definitely, you know, by us redistricting, there was definitely the space to, to be moving things around.
It seems to have equaled out what I saw when I was at Wolf Swamp.
At Wolf Swamp. Right. And I commend Marie Pratt for, for taking the time and doing all of this to illustrate us and illustrate this to us, especially in comparisons. So, thank you, Marie.
So would it be true to say, it looks to me at the elementary schools that we still have, kind of all across the board, pretty tight schools? So when we talk about the middle school, maybe looking at a fifth grade in the middle school instead of the elementary school for a long-term...
That was done a long time ago and then they were moved back to the elementary schools, so...
Yeah, but now we seem to have...
And I don't think middle school has the space.
Well, I'm talking, because we're looking at maybe building projects and everything else. I think that would be something to think about long-term, because right now, this is, you know, center and Wolf Swamp, it's not like there's a ton of space there either.
No, there's not.
You know, so we have, I don't know, I'm just saying, let's look at, I think there's ways to look at long-term, not solutions to this, but maybe long-term ways to look at this, because I just think next year, we're probably gonna be talking about this again at the same time of year, unfortunately.
How do we, okay. Yeah, I think, you know, we, we definitely keep on it and, and see, you know, it'll be interesting to see, because normally, we base our numbers off of the October 1st numbers. So it'll be interesting to see how different the October 1st numbers are from these. You know, and that would give us time to be working, you know, looking to move forward.
Can I ask, do we have any data on families that have left the district? They don't have to tell us that they've left, right?
We find out when they ask to have their records transferred to a new school. So some people may wait till the beginning of the year to do that. But we, every time records are brought in or taken out, we put them into power school and that's how we track our numbers.
But these are the net numbers, right? These are new minus whatever we do know.
Exactly.
And, and one other question. It was my understanding that Wolf Swamp, excuse me, had the largest amount of space available. Is that still true?
No, Center's the largest school.
With the largest amount of space?
Yeah. Wolf Swamp and Blueberry are identical. They have footprints, they're built identically.
But your question is how much available space, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's...
But as reports from principals, all classrooms are being used at both schools. But it's the same thing. They're being used, but you can shift. You can move a reading teacher to share with another one.
Okay, well then, let me ask you this. Let me ask you this, are all rooms classrooms? Because I understand that there was a lot of space built into Wolf Swamp. That was done back in the early nineties.
Yeah, that's not so. The rooms are all being used.
Okay. It's just mythical then, okay?
The extra space that I think you might be talking about is when we had the administrative buildings over there, offices over there, because there is that administrative section. But they have something in there for special ed.
So when we left, all of that was just absorbed back into...
Special education.
Special education.
Okay, all right.
They're nice because they have bathrooms built into them. So for some of the kids, it's nice that they don't leave this learning space.
Very nice.
Okay, so we'll definitely keep this, you know, as a watch and on our future agendas to keep updating. And we do have our walkthrough scheduled for the twenty-first.
Are we voting on whatever the new cost is to do this?
Well, the...
I don't think we normally do because it's a staff, it's within the staff line. So I think I have the discretion to move it.
Well, and I was going to say, this leads into Tom's, you know, he had provided us documentation at our last meeting to review for the revised FY sixteen budget. So Tom, would you like to address that part?
Sure. So there were a number of documents distributed on July twenty-seventh to give you time to look through them. I believe there were seven total different documents. Three of them, or four of them, are basically the budget line items in various formats, the control master, the budget by fund, the budget by control group, and summary of the line items. And then there were three other spreadsheets that I tried to put together to kind of capture the changes that were made based on either positions or FTEs from the budget that was approved by school committee back in February to the one that is being proposed now. The general fund amount did not change. It was the amount that, actually, it was reduced from the amount that school committee voted back in February. And that was based on the amount that was approved at town meeting back in May. There was a reduction of about thirty-eight, thirty-nine thousand dollars. So the first spreadsheet that is titled "The Revised FY Sixteen Budget FTEs," dated July twenty-second. And again, it shows the original FTEs, which were from the February budget, and then the revised numbers based on each of the locations in our budget. And it shows the difference in terms of where we added. And then in the lower section, it kind of details each of the locations and the specific changes in terms of the FTE themselves. So for instance, in pupil services, the budget initially had a psychologist position. It was a vacant position. And it was decided to eliminate that position and add an additional point-five FTE for adjustment counselors at both Blueberry and Center. And we also then added a point-six special ed teacher for Blueberry. So the net effect is a minus point-four in terms of the FTEs at, in the pupil services section of the budget. So I don't know if you want me to go through every single location or if you guys have had a chance to look at those changes and have questions for me on them. I did try to highlight areas that are new positions in terms of the budget. And I think, you know, to the previous discussion, it is difficult to gauge how many sections we need to plan for in December and January when we're developing the budget based on the information at that time. We most certainly underestimated the number of kindergarten students and sections. So you do see both an increase in sections and in the amount of funds that are budgeted from the tuitions we're going to be collecting. Because I did not see us having, never mind, three sections at Wolf Swamp. We're now up to three sections also at Center, which has not been the case in the past. So, so you'll see those increases. The point-one increase at grade one at Blueberry is in the budget, but as of right now, has not been authorized. So we do have that one position that is funded, but does not have a person associated with it. So it's not filled. So we do have a vacant position that is scheduled. And again, looking at the numbers, if it has to be moved, if something happens at grade three, it would be transferred at a later date with school committee approval. So I did try to highlight the sections and positions that were added in the budget from the original approved budget back in February.
And Tom, this does include, because I know in the redistricting talks and with the budget that was posted, it had been where we hadn't moved the positions from one school to another because we were waiting on the final determination of redistricting. So this reflects where we've shifted teachers from Blueberry to Center or from Center to Wolf Swamp as needed, right?
Correct. The original budget in February included a reduction of four teachers at Blueberry and added two to Center. But I didn't know where they would be at Center, so they remained in Blueberry's budget at the time. So if you look under Blueberry, you see a negative two FTEs for grade three at Blueberry that were moved to Center. And consequently, you see a grade two and a grade three at Center that were added from those two positions. So those were the two positions that remained in the budget but were never moved because I did not know where our need was going to be in terms of grade level at Center School. So this is reflective of those changes. Then we also had to move some specialists, again, not knowing exactly what the final number was going to be in terms of students back when the budget was being developed. I didn't know what the impact was going to be on the special subject teacher. So now you're seeing that there's those movements of like a point-one of an FTE from Blueberry to Center to address the additional sections that Center has based on the redistricting that occurred. So any questions on that?
So in a simplistic way, we thought we were going to save two classroom teachers and now it looks like it's one. Is that...
I think, yeah, I think initially we expected to save four and we're probably down to three. If I look at the total sections that Blueberry had last year to this year, we had twenty-five sections and we're at twenty-two right now.
Well, we were going to save four but put two over at Center.
Correct.
So I was thinking that's a net savings of two positions. But then we got to add one now.
One back, yes.
So maybe two.
Yep.
So is the new cost, it looks like it's about fifty-five thousand is what we're budgeting.
That's what we, Bob, that's what I budget for unless we know, unless we've hired the individuals. In some cases, we've already filled a number of those slots, like the grade two at Blueberry. When I revised this budget, we hadn't already filled it. So I don't know, but I did budget about fifty-five thousand.
Okay.
May come in higher, may come in lower, depending upon...
And most of this is being covered, it looks like, from one of the other documents from attrition, retirements.
Correct. Yeah. Changes, I mean, we normally don't revise our budget at this time of the year. Usually what gets approved in February gets implemented. And then all the changes that occur, and it's hard to determine, you know, from year to year, exactly how many staff changes will take place. But since we had to revise it based on settlement of our collective bargaining agreements, I felt it was appropriate to also update the staffing, the individual lines, based on the retirements or individuals who have left and put in the new salaries based on the people that have been hired to date. So that is reflected. And that is where that fund, the funds are coming for to fill those positions. In the past, it's also been used, when we've had this discussion in August, that we've needed to add sections. The problem was the budget wasn't updated until later in the year when we had to go through and do revisions just to update it based on those new sections being added.
Okay.
And so to your point, Russ, the next document is the FY sixteen budget attrition information. So there are nineteen positions that I have listed from what we initially budgeted in terms of, you know, what we thought the position might be filled at and then what the actual individual who came in and took the position was hired at. So it's a detailed listing of all of those positions that have been impacted in terms of the budget that was approved in February to the budget that is being presented to you for consideration. So you can see there's three hundred thousand dollars of changes that have, that have occurred in terms of the positions that have been, that have some turnover since February. And then the third document is also, it's looking at, you know, a lot of these new positions, the nine-point-seven FTEs that, in the first document, that the budget is increasing by. And you can, again, see by location each of those positions and where they are and how much is associated to the position. Again, with those that are filled by an individual because the hiring has been completed, I put in the actual amount. For those specifically like grade one and grade two at Blueberry that are budgeted, but an individual might not have been hired as of yet, you can see that those are a, just an estimated amount of fifty-five thousand. So, and some of this is general fund, some of this is private kindergarten because we did increase the number of students who are enrolled in full-day kindergarten. So the amount of funds that are being budgeted has increased based on the increased number of students. And some of that was picked up by the tuition, some of it is picked up by the general fund because the tuition does not cover the full amount on a fifty-fifty split of each full-day kindergarten section. So as best I could, I tried to summarize the changes in the spreadsheets without having to get into the detail of the actual financial statements themselves to kind of give you an overview of the impact on the positions and where the changes were, both in terms of FTE and dollar amounts. If I could add, there's one other piece, and that is that there are some of the other, you know, our grants and special revenues, for instance, when we, when I planned out the budget, you know, again, based on the fact that we have settlements now, so some of those amounts have increased. So we would have increased our, you know, preschool amount because now we're, we have higher costs associated based on the contractual settlements that we have settled. So some of those line items in terms of the budget by fund, if you compare it to the original budget, have also been increased. But the general fund itself has been decreased, as I mentioned, when I, when I first started the explanation.
So is the attrition, we save about three hundred sixty-three thousand because of retirements and attrition. Is the increased cost the four sixty-nine? Is that four hundred sixty-nine thousand? So there's a difference of about a hundred thousand. Where, so where does that money come from?
I would say part of it has been from, we had a certain amount budgeted for our collective bargaining agreements.
Okay.
And when we were done applying all of the settlements to the budget, and again, there is, there's some amounts reserved for unsettled contracts. It's, I would say there's that difference. Not knowing where we were going to finish, where our contract settlements were going to end.
Okay.
We had to build in an amount to meet that obligation.
All right, any other questions for Tom?
Yeah, just a quick one. Have we finished all our collective bargaining?
We have, we have one unit, the custodians, that we have a, we have not finalized, we finalized negotiations, but it has not come to school committee or has been ratified yet. But we have come to agreement on the terms.
Is that going to have an impact on these numbers?
Uh, no, I built in what I believe the settlement was in terms of the base pay piece because we had reached a tentative agreement on that portion of the negotiations.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so from finance subcommittee?
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approve the revised FY sixteen budget as presented in the documents dated July twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen.
Please a motion and a second. And we'll need to roll call vote for those in favor.
Could we have discussion for one minute?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
So if we need to add one more teacher, I'd want to revisit this. I know it's listed here, but we haven't actually done it. So just because of a space perspective, I'm not sure where that teacher would go and what would have to change. And you indicate it's unlikely, but I'm just saying if it happened, I'd like to look at it.
There's a map there that shows you if we had the first grade teacher.
If we add them both, first and second, so what?
It's the last page of the maps provided by Marie Pratt.
And is that the same thing, we take something like reading recovery and add them to somebody else as well?
She'll move the literacy person.
Yeah, well, she moves the math person off of the first floor and puts them in that hallway by the cafeteria, it looks like, where ELL is and the first math.
And then ELL...
It looks like moves over next to the resource room, next to that fourth grade classroom in the front hallway by the courtyard.
And that moves the literacy coach back into the book closet.
But that would result in four and a half FTEs in that one room?
No.
No.
It says three people and one and a half people.
The last page, two thousand and fifteen, sixteen? That's what it was, and this is a much better flow.
But you're indicating you don't think we're going to need to do that.
I don't think so right now. It would have to be a phenomenal amount of students. We'd need like six, eight students enrolling.
Any further discussion? All right, so roll call vote for those in favor of the motion on the table.
Yes, aye. Russell DuPere, aye.
Liz, aye.
John Fitzgerald, aye.
Janet Robinson, aye.
Michael Clark, aye.
Kim, aye.
Michelle Godsky, aye.
Okay.
I should know I'm taking notes and not sending you notes.
I know you're taking notes.
I just want everyone who's watching to know I'm not sending you notes.
I know, we appreciate that.
I'm taking notes.
We do have the school committee goals for approval. I believe those were sent out with the packets. They were, I revised them base, or Diane revised them based on our retreat. So, can I have a motion on that, please?
I move on the school, I move that the school committee accept the school committee goals as outlined in the document titled "Two Thousand and Fifteen, Two Thousand and Sixteen School Committee Goals." Dated, there's no date.
As presented.
As presented.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on school committee goals? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Russell DuPere, aye.
Liz, aye.
John Fitzgerald, aye.
Janet Robinson, aye.
Michael Clark, aye.
Kim King, aye.
Michelle Godsky, aye.
Okay. So our goals will then be updated on our website for those who aren't interested. We also had talked about revising our school committee norms at our retreat. Those who had recommended changes, they've been made in the document. And so while we don't have to vote on them, I do want to make sure that we have consensus. Anything else that anybody sees that needs to be changed or any further discussion on the school committee norms? Okay, so with that, and we'll have Diane post those as well as our new norms. We don't have to vote as long as we all agree. And I'm assuming that by no further discussion, we're in agreement. Diane also provided the subcommittee assignments for us, which will be posted on our website. And she's also provided a listing of school committee meetings and potential agenda items just for your reference so that, you know, trying to make sure that we had everything that we needed scheduled plus making sure that presentations were not done on nights where we had business to take care of. Of course, this will be revised and updated through the year as necessary, but just this gives everybody a basis of where we're at. The other thing is, we talked about posting a frequently asked questions section on the school committee website, which I had distributed. I know Liz, you had made some... I know, Liz, you had made some suggestions, if you wanted, would you mind review?
No.
Discussing those?
No problem. I had one question, which was in the last, what the school committee role in special ed is, and we had put down advocate for, advocate for students, and I just thought maybe that could be a little more descriptive, because some might think it's like, we take it on personally to, and I don't think that we're allowed to do that. So, maybe like a little more detailed, in what way do we advocate for students?
I'm open to suggestions.
Oh, I don't know. Maybe I, maybe Mark could help us with that. A little more descriptive.
Make sure that specialized students are treated fairly.
Dignity. But not like personally, like we don't go into meetings.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I mean, and what does our committee do for them in terms of advocating for them?
Maybe it's something like develop, you know, a culture in which, you know, students are treated fairly and equitably.
Right.
You know, I mean, I think that our role, more often than not, is more about setting the tone and direction.
Right.
You know, and, and so, whatever we decide has to be like, not that that's anything you weren't already saying, because it was everything you were saying.
Right.
But, you know, just to kind of add to that.
Right, I just didn't want to think it made it like it was a personal.
Right, that we were personal advocates.
Right. Okay, I had other thing, I had questions that maybe we could add. One was, as a parent, if they had a complaint or issue, should we bring it to the visitor's comment section? And I thought that, that, like a complaint or issue, that maybe it should be told that first you need to go through the proper channel?
The chain of command.
The chain of command.
Okay.
So, maybe just a suggestion on that, in case parents don't know.
Okay.
The other thing I would add to that, if I can, is that we should put a, you know, sort of like a disclosure in here that if parents do choose to come to school committee to discuss specific issues relating to their student, that they will be providing, you know, that they should be cautious that they may be providing sensitive and personal information about their student in public on television.
Right.
And I think oftentimes what happens when we do have parents that come is that they don't know that, or, you know, they're not as sensitive to that fact. And, you know, certainly, we, in our email exchanges and when we're dealing with them, try very hard to make sure that personal information regarding students isn't part of the public record and, you know, is, is really kind of kept private. So, just, you know, kind of, sort of a reminder that they should, you know, if they, if they plan to speak, be cautious of that fact.
Well, not only in speaking, but in emailing us as well.
Yeah, which is, not to say we don't want to hear, you know, from them regarding specific issues, but, you know, we certainly want to be sensitive to their children's privacy, you know.
Okay. Go on, Liz.
Okay, um, my next one was, I don't know if we should have something about like a role of parents working with the school committee? I don't know, maybe like, because sometimes we were talking about, like, search committees and things like that, so maybe tie that together. Like, if a parent wanted to be on a search committee, how do they go, what do they do? Or? Or like the relationship between a parent and a school committee member, I don't know.
The first part of that question, we talked about possibly the principals asking the parents at the beginning of the school year.
Right.
Things pop up throughout the year, search committees, whatever. If you're a parent that would like to possibly be on one, let me know now, and I'll keep your name on a running list. We don't know what's going to happen.
Right, so maybe just say, if you would like to be on a sub, whatever, search committee, inform your principal, something like that.
Otherwise, they're just going to go to the PTOs. We're going to get the same people every time.
Right, right.
Right.
My next one was, do school committee members get paid? Not being known.
Just a quick reminder.
Do they work other jobs?
Yes.
Maybe the difference between the school committee and the select board and their roles within the town?
In terms of buildings?
Yeah, I, so I got back down, so I said, I kind of made like a little chart, so like school committee, education, budget, school policy, and then select board, I had school building, maintenance, ground maintenance, budget directive, so something like that. And then.
School committee, schools, select board, everything else.
And then, my last one was, what role does the superintendent have with the school committee?
And maybe even, you know, that organizational chart that we put into the budget document, just so there's an understanding that, you know, it flows in a certain, you know, it flows in certain directions.
Right, and plus, I wasn't thinking when I was writing this down, but after looking at our, our goals, our school committee goals, it kind of, it doesn't separate what the superintendent's role, I mean, it's doing this year, but it's kind of, we have maybe see that document as well.
Right, and then I did have the document that's titled roles and responsibilities, school committee superintendent, that we can add in as a link, because it's rather long. But in terms of each category, whether it be policy, whether it be advocacy, whether it be bargaining, you know, it states what school committee is responsible for and what the superintendent, and that's directly from MASC and MASs who jointly did that, so.
Right, so a link or something.
Okay, so I'll be happy to, to add that and tweet those in. Anybody else?
Well, I was just, my first, on the, how we can communicate with the school committee?
I was thinking of updating that so that whether we all get it or whether it's official communication, based on our last discussion, Kim?
Well, well, Mike.
Okay, go ahead.
This is different than that.
Okay.
When I look at, it says email the school committee at this email address, email particularly a member at this address. Formal correspondence, what's the difference between emailing the school committee at this address and formal correspondence should be mailed in writing? So, I'm kind of like, that confuses me, like, wait a minute, if I email the school committee at this email address, is it not formal correspondence?
Maybe I, I should change it to say, if you prefer to send written correspondence.
That might be, yeah, just so that they can do, they can either email us or they can send it in a formal written communication.
Okay.
That was just.
No problem.
The other thing, and this is kind of just a follow-up on what we talked about during the.
Retreat?
Retreat. That the reason that people have a trouble, hard time, you know, potentially finding that, that school committee at alumado.k twelve email address is because of the way that it's organized on the webpage?
And, and we were going to reorganize the webpages.
Okay, and it is, actually it has been, so I just want to follow up.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, I think it, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Right.
I was going to say the same thing, and I think formal correspondence would be mailed or that one email address, right, so you're going to change that.
Right, so I'll redo that.
The agenda, is there a way we can just put a link on the webpage to the school committee agendas, and I can just click on the link?
It is hyperlink, how do I know what will be discussed?
Well, I mean, instead of going to frequently asked questions, that we just have agendas here, school committee meeting dates and agendas, and I can just click on it, and then it'll go to the town website. Just to make it easier. I didn't see it, I, I think you have to go, you have to kind of search for it, and then you go to the town website, and then you're going to click on a calendar, and then you're going to click on the date.
I can ask that Diane add those links to town calendar?
Realistically, all it needs to do, all it needs to be is when you do the dropdown, where it says like school committee and all that, just, you know, another one that says school committee agenda, and it just a hyperlink to the school committee.
Yeah, because that's one of the most frequently asked questions is, why can't I find what you're talking about, and when are you meeting? And I explained how to do it, but it's, it took a little while, the first time I looked to try and find it too, actually.
All right, so I'll ask Diane if she can add a link from the dropdown to the top, to hyperlink the agenda.
Unless we can embed it into a Google Calendar on our webpage, but let's just take the easy road.
Maybe we could add a link to the live stream as well there. I don't know, just, people think that's.
That just needs to be more accessible.
Don't you want to be accessible?
It's kind of joking.
All right, John?
Maybe it's just interpretation. Under, well, on roles and responsibilities, lower right corner, the second paragraph, review and approve principals hires of all teachers. The superintendent has the right to disapprove as well.
So. I, I just copied this.
We're not saying review and approve, it's, has the right to disapprove.
Right.
Is that something we should spell out, or is that understood?
Well, since I copied this directly from MASC and have them listed as the reference link at the end, I, I don't know that I feel comfortable starting to change their stuff while linking it.
They're not infallible.
But that is true.
Well, I just.
Okay.
Maybe.
I mean, I'm happy, you know, if the committee feels strongly that it's not understood.
Do we have past practice or precedent for having a principal recommend something that you then overrode?
We discuss it and work it out.
Because I think it happened under a previous.
Yeah, we could work in relationships.
But it is understood that you have the final to say.
Yes, it's understood.
Do you think that needs clarification there?
Well, I'm not, there are some things in here that I wouldn't, some things I probably wouldn't agree with completely, but it, it's, it's an MASC document, so I was just going to let it go, and you can always agree to disagree, I guess. I mean, ultimately, the law controls anyway, so you'd have, this document wouldn't have any binding effect on it really.
So, I'll make those corrections, and then I'll present them for our next meeting, for the FAQ portion. We do have warrants, Liz?
Yep. Okay, I move on the school committee, I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number twenty-two hundred of the school lunch FY sixteen fund, dated August fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, roll call vote?
Liz, aye.
John Fitzgerald, aye.
Janet Robinson, aye.
Michael Clark, aye.
Kim King, aye.
Michelle Gadsby, aye.
A second, I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number two-nine-eight-nine of the general operating fund FY sixteen, dated August fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of two hundred thousand, ninety-six dollars and twelve cents.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Russell DuPere, aye.
Liz, aye.
John Fitzgerald, aye.
Janet Robinson, aye.
Michael Clark, aye.
Kim King, aye.
Michelle Gadsby, aye.
Is that all, Liz?
Yep.
For warrants? Okay, so we have approval of minutes, and for these, so many minutes, so little time. I would suggest that they, for executive session, not be released.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the June seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote?
Russell DuPere, aye.
Liz, aye.
John Fitzgerald, aye.
Janet Robinson, aye.
Michael Clark, aye.
Kim King, aye.
Michelle Gadsby, aye.
Just to save time, can we not just say all the dates at the same time?
Sure.
We have like five months to do.
That's, do you want to do the non-executive session?
Sure. I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the June twenty-second, July sixth, and July thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Roll call?
Russell DuPere, aye.
Liz, aye.
John Fitzgerald, aye.
Janet Robinson, aye.
Michael Clark, aye.
Kim King, aye.
Michelle Gadsby, aye.
And I move that the school committee approve the minutes of the executive session minutes from the June twenty-second meeting, July sixth, two thousand and fifteen meeting, and the July thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen meeting, as presented.
Second.
I don't have to say any.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote?
Russell DuPere, aye.
Liz, aye.
John Fitzgerald, aye.
Janet Robinson, aye.
Michael Clark, aye.
Kim King, aye.
Michelle Gadsby, aye.
Okay. One thing that I did also want to clarify from our last meeting, and this has been in talking with Tom and working with him, now that you're back from vacation, about the RFPs, and what is going to be happening is, I misinterpreted the email where it said about the reference checks, that reference checks should begin on the day that the proposals are received. I interpreted that to mean that as they came in, we could begin reference checks. That's not the case. It will be, upon receipt means upon the August twentieth deadline, you know, when the, the bids are all open. So, I would like to make sure we clarify that, and I do apologize for my misunderstanding. So, that would mean then that the committee who will be calling to do the reference checks, review the RFPs, and make a recommendation, we will need to have our meeting on August the thirty-first for that, because they will need, I, I don't think that three business days is going to be enough time to, to get the RFP, the, all of that completed by the committee. And from that, we'll need to, how was this, Tom, with the presentation?
Technical.
The technical presentation? We're still reviewing as to whether that will be done for the entire school committee as stated in the RFP, or whether we can waive that right based on the recommendation of the subcommittee. So, there may need to be a meeting between August the thirty-first and September the fifteenth. We may need to add an additional meeting at that point.
Should we add it now?
We can.
I don't know, is that bad?
No, that, that's fine, we can certainly.
So, we're adding a meeting August thirty-first?
Yes, that's already been posted.
And then we're adding one in between?
In between there and our regular meeting on the fifteenth.
And that would be for interviewing the search firms, if we decided to do that?
For their presentations, correct, Tom?
Well, the way I understand it is that the evaluation committee will review the RFPs, rank them, and I don't know if you're interested in having presentations by more than one, meaning the top scored vendor, whose proposal, you know, that is, or whoever gets recommended, doesn't necessarily have to be, I guess, the top ranked, but whomever the subcommittee recommends, or is there a desire to have presentations done by multiple vendors? The challenge is, I don't know that the RFP was set up to say, part of the criteria for evaluating the bids is a presentation to the entire school committee. I thought, I think we dropped that as one of the criterias for evaluating them. So, I just don't know if the school committee, if they decide to reject whomever the subcommittee recommends, what the criteria will be used to determine that. So, I, I'm just not sure exactly what the intention of the school committee is by having a presentation as part of, or if I understand this correctly, as part of the selection of the vendor.
So, I would think, if the RFP doesn't include it, then on the thirty-first, we would either have to select the top candidate or not, with reasons based on what we have before us.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, Russ, I haven't seen it where the evaluation committee does all of the review work and then has a separate evaluation or another piece done by the full school committee. Either that evaluation committee says, yes, this is the company we want to go with, and then the contract is awarded based on that, and then there's like an initial meeting with the company and the school committee to then work out the timeline and process and all of that. So, I just wasn't clear what the discussion was on July twenty-seventh either. So, I didn't know what you guys were looking for.
I think my understanding was, we were just going to review what was presented and either vote yes or no. I think having another presentation would cause us a problem, because we'd be adding another layer that's not in the RFP.
And giving the firm time to get here, depending upon where they're coming from, we needed to put another week in, that's why Janet was suggesting we added another meeting. We most certainly on the thirty-first, again, based on the work of the subcommittee, you may be, you know, you may decide at that point, their recommendation is who you want to go with. Again, not, not knowing what the discussion was as to what the, you know, the intention of school committee was with the discussion on the twenty-seventh, I just wasn't clear on what you guys want, so. with the discussion on the 27th, I just wasn't clear on what you guys wanted, so.
So let me ask a question about that. With regard to, with regard to the RFP and the 20th responding date, when would our committee, our committee have to meet on the 31st, as stated in the RFP, the evaluation committee, to go through the technicals?
Well, depends. You guys can meet whenever you want.
Okay.
As a committee, you, the documents will be received and we'll get them distributed on the 20th to the subcommittee members. I think you'll probably want to meet maybe on the 21st to determine who's going to call which company's references and, you know, what.
What questions are going to be.
Review the criteria in terms of highly advantageous, advantageous, and, you know, how you rank them, but, you know, and then go through all of the other pieces, because I believe there's seven or eight different.
Right.
Evaluation criteria listed in the RFP.
Okay, so then we'll plan a meeting for, not that weekend.
Could do Monday?
Yeah, maybe the 24th.
Monday, the 24th, I think would be the best. Okay, cool.
All right, so your subcommittee will.
Will meet. And Michelle, when do you come back from, from wherever you are?
I will be back on the 30th, 30th.
Okay, so we'll probably have to do one of these.
She'll get the documents.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we can scan, scan and send them to you.
Maybe we'll use one of the LMOs and put you up on the screen to Skype.
It'll just be the subcommittee, so it's not, you know, televised.
Yeah.
So, at this point then, we are not adding an additional meeting for any presentations, correct?
Nope.
And then the 15th would be the presentation, September 15th.
September 15th is a regular school committee meeting.
So the search firm would come in that day, I would think.
No, we had said on the timeline, hopefully the week of September the 8th, we would need to schedule an additional meeting.
Maybe we'll do it on the 8th.
This isn't.
So should we book that now, just?
Well, we didn't know a date from, from the firm. You know, that would have to be determined in collaboration with when the firm's available to meet with us as well.
Is this so that they can come have that initial meeting about timeline and search committee?
Yes.
I mean, I think the 15th might be most appropriate, assuming that the committee, school committee agrees on the 31st of August to move forward, you know, with the recommendation, to give a firm two weeks, I think is reasonable.
Okay.
To be here and, plus to work out a contract. We have to have a contract signed, I'm sure, before they're going to want to come. So I don't think two weeks is unreasonable. I think the week of the 8th might be.
Pushing it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll add to the agenda for September the 15th, the search firm meeting with the school committee regarding the process.
And I would say, if we could tell them in advance that we want them to actually come, not just a meet and greet, but come in with your layout of what you want to do.
Yeah, you want to know who's assigned to you and the timeline and recommendations on search committees, and not just a five-minute hello.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you say September 15th? That's a Tuesday.
Yeah, because that Monday is.
It's a holiday.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yes.
We all want to jump in.
All right, so we do have an executive session planned for this meeting. So can I please have a motion?
I move.
I move that the school committee adjourn to executive session for the purposes of strategies that relates to bargaining with non-union personnel and to reconvene into open session. And to not reconvene into open session, this motion requires a roll call vote.
Russell DuPree, aye.
Liz, aye.
I have to be seconded.
You're seconded, okay.
Okay, John Fitzgerald, aye.
Janet Robinson, aye.
Michael Clark, aye.
Kim King, aye.
Michelle Gabski, aye.
Okay, so thank you very much. We will be back to our regular scheduled sessions, August the 24th at 7:00 PM. We will see you then. Thank you.